Good evening, everyone. This is a public hearing of the zoning Board of Appeals. The zoning ordinance empowers us to hear references from the city council, petitions from other parties for variances and special uses, and appeals from the decisions of the zoning administrator. We hear testimony from those in attendance and then make formal findings of fact based on the evidence presented, which consists of testimony and exhibits and on our knowledge of this community. We either then make a determination or recommendation to the city council. Testimony is taken under oath. Although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence and procedures, we ask that you keep your testimony relevant to the proposal as it relates to the standards contained in the zoning ordinance. When you testify, please state your name and address for the record and print your name on the, well, let us know your name. Each case will be introduced by staff and a list of documents will be read into the record. Then the applicant will give an explanation of their proposal. After that, those who wish to testify as either proponents or opponents of the case will have the chance to do so, and then the applicant will have a chance to respond. Any case not concluded at tonight's hearing will be continued to our next meeting. Cade, will you please call the roll?
Chair Collin.
Present.
Members Ordin.
Here.
Member McCauley.
Present.
Member Deacon.
Here.
Member Miranchov.
Here.
Member Puktel. Absent. Member Arvalo, also absent.
Okay, we have a call. I am going to swear on anyone who plans on giving testimony to the cases scheduled for tonight. Raise your right hand. Do you swear and affirm that the testimony you will provide in connection with this case will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Then I have a motion to suspend the rules to participate electronically and by telephone.
I move that we suspend the regulations to meet in person and in light of the COVID pandemic that we meet digitally for this ZBA meeting.
Second.
All in favor, Cade, are you gonna call a roll call?
I will, yeah.
Okay.
Member Collin, or Chair Collin?
Aye.
Members Ordin.
Aye.
Member McCauley.
Aye.
Member Deacon.
Aye.
Member Miranchov.
Aye.
Thank you, it passes. Okay, so the next thing is approval of the meeting minutes for October 20th. Do we have enough people that were at that meeting that we can make this motion? Do we have enough people present?
Yes, we do, we do, because I think that there were four of us, right?
Yeah.
You and Carol and me. Joe, were you at that last meeting?
No, Joe wasn't there.
Oh.
And Lisa, you weren't there either? So then that's three votes. So we don't have enough really to approve it. Maybe we'll move that to the next agenda, Cade?
Yes, yep.
Yeah, just so we can be on record for that. Okay, let's move forward to new business. Is the respondent for 900 Edgemere Court present? The person that's going to be speaking for tonight, is that you, Amy? Okay, great.
That's me, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, would you like to read that into the record?
Amy Reichert, architect, applies for major zoning relief to construct a roofed connection between the existing detached coach house and principal structure in the R1 Single Family Residential District in Lake Shore Historic District. The applicant requests zero-foot rear yard setback for a principal structure where 30 feet is required and zero feet is the existing legal non-conforming condition as an accessory structure. Zoning Code Section 6828A4, the zoning Board of Appeals is the determining body for this case.
Ms. Reichert, would you like to tell us about your proposal?
Sure, sure. So there's a wonderful landmark building, 900 Edgemere by Mayo and Mayo in 1927, and with a coach house that's very close. The closest part is under seven feet. We're looking to connect the garage interior with a new mudroom attached to the house, which is now permitted as of September 29th, ruling by city council. And while we are not actually building beyond any current setbacks by connecting these two buildings, we're essentially making what was an accessory structure, the ADU of the coach house, into part of the main house. So by definition, it's now over the 30-foot minimum setback. So we're not actually looking to increase the nonconformance in terms of, you know, building into a setback space. It's more almost a legal definition of what the existing condition is. So we're seeking relief from that.
Okay. So I have a question about this. Is, how much of a square footage is this extension?
It's about 80 square feet. It's about a 42-square-foot mudroom and about the same little covered breezeway. It's essentially a breezeway and a mudroom which will connect the garage to the kitchen.
Thank you. Members of the board, questions? Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Reichert?
Happy to answer anything.
You know, I really, I looked at the documents presented and and there's nothing that you can do to move the garage further in from the alley. This is a historic structure. Needless to say, you know, preservation voted unanimously to approve it. I see this as being a very reasonable accommodation for the needs that are present.
I would agree with that assessment.
I agree too. There's, there is nothing to say about it. It's a very reasonable project.
And it's nicely designed.
Thank you. We tried to make it very compatible and took a lot of measurements of existing details and we're trying to echo those in this little, little building, little piece.
It's a great house, so, yeah.
It's beautiful, yeah, yeah. And this makes, you know, it's one of these things that now, of course, you know, you want that kind of accessibility from parking and that was not an issue in the day.
Yeah.
So we appreciate the city councils, you know, recognizing that in that new, new ruling.
Joe, did you want to say something?
Just to echo, I mean, any concerns that I could have had over this would have been appropriately reviewed and raised by the Historic Preservation Commission. So with their unanimous approval, I'm happy to move forward.
I as well support this and I'm going to go ahead and read the variance standards for this if there's no other problems. Anybody have anything else to say about this, this project? Okay, so let's move forward. "The responses to the standards below constitute the professional opinion of the planning and zoning staff. Determination whether the standards for major variation have been met shall be exclusively afforded to members of the board. For the ZBA to recommend approval of a variance, the ZBA must find that the proposed variance A will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment, or property values of adjoining properties. Staff believes that this standard has been met. Staff has not received any objections from the neighboring property owners. Moreover, the nonconforming setback in question is unchanged and will not increase its impact on the neighboring properties beyond what exists currently. B is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. Staff believes that this standard has been met. The proposal aligns with the goals of the Comprehensive General Plan and the zoning ordinance's desire to promote the health and well-being of Evanston's citizenry. C has a hardship or practical difficulty that is peculiar to the property. Staff believes that this standard has been met. The existing detached structure is legally nonconforming located on the rear lot line. The condition is typical of many properties within periods of construction which predate the zoning ordinance. The proposed changes do not alter the existing condition in question, although the setback requirements changed based on the owner's desire for the attached accessory dwelling unit as recently permitted by city council. Standard D, the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience. Staff believes that this standard has been met. The property owner and elderly live-in family members would suffer a particular hardship and practical difficulty navigating the space between the structures safely, particularly in inclement weather. Exstrict adherence to the zoning ordinance were enforced. Standard E is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property or benefit to the whole will be derived. Staff believes that this standard has also been met. The property will continue to be owner-family occupied and no additional income will result from this proposal. Even if the accessory dwelling unit were rented in the future, no significant increase in rent could be attributed to the proposed roof connection. F does not have a hardship or practical difficulty that was created by any person having an interest in the property. Staff believes that this standard has been met. The practical difficulty of navigating the space between structures safely during inclement weather is in no way created by the property owner's desire to create safe, multi-generational housing and housing which fits the needs of their aging family member. Standard G is limited to the minimum change necessary to alleviate the particular hardship or practical difficulty. Staff believes that this standard has been met. Although other alternatives were considered, including temporary overhead structures, they would not result in an adequately safe intervention capable of accommodating the accessibility needs of the elderly family member." Can I have someone call the motion, please?
I'll call the motion. In the matter of ZBA 20ZMJV-0069 for 900 Edgemere Court, I move that we support the major zoning relief to construct the roof connection between the existing detached coach house and the principal structure in the R1 Single Family Residential District.
Second. Okay.
Chair Collin.
Agreed.
Members Ordin.
Agreed.
Member McCauley.
Yes.
Member Deacon.
Aye.
Member Miranchov.
Aye.
Your proposal passes. Please get in touch with the zoning office and they will tell you about your next steps.
Okay. Thank you all so much and thank you all for your service too. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's say, okay, so we are moving on to the next one, which is 1235 Dodge Avenue. Is the respondent here for 1235 Dodge?
Yes.
Okay. Cade, could you read this into the record?
Mohammed Ali Lessie submits for a special use for a convenience store, Munchies, in the C1 Commercial District. Zoning Code Section 61023. The zoning Board of Appeals makes a recommendation to city council, the determining body for this case.
Thank you. Mr. Ali?
Yes. How are you?
Hi. Would you care to tell us about your proposal, please?
Okay, so this is basically a convenience store in a beautiful West End neighborhood of Evanston. This is gonna consist of snacks, cookies, donuts, granola bars, Mexican candy, chips, a lot of variety of chips, three coolers, which is gonna consist of drinks like Coke, 7-Up, and Arizona. We'll have a little bit of a section for a beauty supply, diapers, medicine like Tylenol, Mike Will, etc., cigarettes, chewing tobacco and cigars.
Are you selling cigarettes, sir?
Yes.
Where will you sell the cigarettes?
Behind the counter, six feet behind the counter.
Six feet behind the counter. So they will only be accessible by the person that's working the cash register?
Correct.
Board members, do you have questions for this applicant?
Yeah, Mr. Ali, there, there was some concern from DAPR that the layout of the store was not sufficiently presented for them to confirm that the cigarettes were safely out of the way of minors and, and just essentially, the, the floor plan that you had presented to DAPR apparently didn't match the storefront plan that they had and they had suggested that you revise that, that floor plan before this meeting. Did you, were you able to make any revisions or present another floor plan?
Yes, I made another one and I haven't.
Is it something that, that's visible to us now?
I can get it for you, yeah, I could send it again.
Oh, so.
Did you receive that?
Was there another floor plan sent, Cade?
I, I think what he's referring to is we, we originally, at the first DAPR meeting, had a site plan, a floor plan that was a completely different proposal.
Right.
And then it was held in committee and he came back with a revised floor plan. And DAPR had asked for revisions to that revised floor plan, which he presented then, which, which we haven't received.
Okay. Well, so, so, Mr. Ali, I think that that would be a good thing for you to have prepared in a visual format or send it to Cade or, you know, someone in zoning for the city council meeting to follow this, should we recommend approval to city council.
Okay.
Have you done that? Is that the one that you were saying you have?
Yeah.
Okay, could you email that to Cade?
Yeah, I could.
Okay.
Can I jam in?
Yeah, please.
So I believe the floor plan we're referring to is already in the documents. It's a page that says ground floor plan and there is an index 1 of 1 on top left. For the members of the zoning board, I will explain a little bit because I am very familiar with the place. It's the former JetBlue Printing Store and I used to go there very often for my, for my work and for my printing needs. It is actually a relatively large space that is accessible from an interior corridor that leads to the car wash in the back. So the place is not available from the street. You have to go into the corridor. To the right is the door to the future convenience store. To the left is a phone company office. So that's why it is a little bit confusing with all the plans that were provided. Obviously, on the front pages, there were some sample layouts of different projects and the only layout that refers to this project is on display page, which is once again called 1 of 1 and it's called ground floor plan. And there are some indications of the location of the coolers, the candy bars, and so on. So just explanation to the, to the board members.
Do you have that document, Cade? That Carol is referring to?
Yeah, I do, that's, that's included in the packet.
Yeah, no, and I, and I saw that, but I thought that they were requesting more. It wasn't clear from that floor plan that the cigarettes were actually set up behind the counter and the coolers were, I think, labeled beer coolers, which caused people to question that. But Carol, what I also didn't get from that floor plan, I did not understand that the entry to this convenience store was the common entry to the car wash. So, I mean, that in itself, I think, creates a little bit of concern. Is there no accessible point of egress or access besides that common corridor?
No, if you, if you take a look at the front, of the photo of the front elevation.
Right.
It has car wash and there is a door in the middle. On the right is the window for this future convenience store. On the left is the metro PC. It's actually a phone store, so.
It's actually a hair salon.
It's a hair salon right now, yeah.
Yeah. So this is, this is the entrance unless the, the, let's see, tries to make an entrance from the street, which is not shown on the drawings right now.
Mr. Ali, does this store only have one way in and out? Is there another door?
No, it's only one way in.
Okay.
On Dodge.
On Dodge, into the corridor, right.
Yeah, the employees could come through the back also, like through the car wash. There's a door also that leads from the car wash to the two stores in the back.
Okay.
I see. So, so if people are waiting for their cars to be washed, they can run in and do a little shopping at the store?
Yeah, exactly, you know. They could, you know, come in and just hang out while their cars are being washed, you know, in the meantime.
I have a.
Although it raises, it raises a little bit of concern about the, you know, you, you had indicated in the materials that your busiest time you anticipate will be between 12 and 3. I'm assuming that that might entail students from the high school at lunchtime or right after school, which could create a little bit of a crush in that hallway. But I'm sure that that's something that you would regulate.
Had you thought about that, Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Did I see somewhere in the proposal that you had a plan that you would only allow two high schoolers in there at a time?
Yes.
That's what I thought I read.
I'll jump in here if I may. Mr. Ali, can you speak to where deliveries are going to be received for the store? How?
Delivery, we, we won't do delivery unless there's an option on the Uber app where Uber eats, you could also, you know, get delivered food from like convenience stores, à la 7-Eleven, you know, like they have their own app where customers, you know, choose on the app what they want and, and the driver delivers to the customers. But other than that, we won't do deliveries.
So that's, that's you delivering product, but how are you going to receive your product? So when you have all of the drinks and everything stocked in the beer or in the coolers and the chips and everything, how is that gonna be delivered to the store?
It will be delivered, it could come through the back. There's a, a large parking space and if we have inventory, we could come from the back and there's a back door also that I could come and place the items through the door and bring it to the store.
So that, all, so you're saying that all deliveries would happen through the rear of the store where you have parking that's designated and there's a rear door? So there would be no deliveries that would be received off of Dodge Avenue? Is that what I'm understanding?
I mean, it could be, also be deliveries from the front, but there would, there, there's a, there's a bike lane over there, so they would have to park like maybe 10 to 15 feet away from the store. They could also deliver through there. I feel it'd be much better if they come through the back because there's parking already back there, you know, so they don't have to worry about where they're gonna place their cars or when they come.
And so speaking of parking, I understand there's some parking spaces in the back and can you help me understand? So some customers will park in those designated spots in the back? Is that accurate?
They could choose to park in the back if they want, but there's also a lot of parking on Dodge. It's a, it's empty majority of the time. So if they want, they could also park on Dodge and walk a couple feet because there's a, a bike lane in front of the storefront.
Right. And so then there is an access point from the rear parking to, into the rear of the building to enter the store? Or they have to walk around?
No, they, they would have to walk around if they would park in the back.
Or through the car wash? You know, if you walk through the car wash, you can get to this alley from the car wash, this corridor. So, yeah. But there's no designated parking unless it's the back, right, Mr. Ali?
Yes.
And then, sir, can you speak to what percent of your sales would be derived from the tobacco products in the store?
Maybe 10% of all the product will be tobacco approximately.
So I recall seeing in the DAPR notes that it was anticipated to be 50% or more. Are you thinking, has your business model changed since that discussion?
No, I mean, we feel like, you know, 10% should be more than enough because majority is gonna be snacks, you know, just like a 7-Eleven where they sell chips and candy and drinks, cookies, donuts, you know.
Mr. Ali, what hours do you anticipate being open?
We were, we were gonna do 9 to 9, 9:00 in the morning to 9:00 at night, 9:00 PM.
The same hours every day?
Yeah, seven days a week.
I have a question. And it is both to Mr. Ali and to staff. In the documents, it's written that there is parking to the south of the building. And we can see that currently there is a parking to the east of the building. But what I see on the plans, both these parkings are in other properties. Is there any, any documents that this convenience store will be able to use these parking spaces?
Yes, I could confirm it with the owner also.
For which, for the east?
Yeah.
Or for the south one?
The, the, the store customer parking will be to the east of the building. The customers will park to the south on Dodge.
But the Dodge parking is street parking, right, Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Okay.
There, there is a lease, Carol, I haven't, I haven't, I didn't read anything in it about parking yet, but that should be addressed in the commercial lease that he has. I'm going through it quickly, but I don't see anything about parking and that usually is a subcategory.
Mr. Ali, one additional question. In your estimate, what percentage of your customers will come driving to your facility? And what percentage will be pedestrians just looking for your services?
The driving customers, maybe around 10%. Majority will be pedestrians and a lot of walking traffic around the area. It's a lot of storefronts on, in the Evanston Plaza across the street. So if the store owners or the store employees across, they need simple things like water or energy drinks, go through their day, you know, they could easily walk across the street. Or people on the north of us, the currency exchange and the insurance place, they could walk also. And a lot, a lot of neighborhood residents in the back also, so they could easily walk to the store.
Will this be enough to sustain your business model?
Yes, it should be enough.
Okay, thank you.
Could you use the Evanston Plaza parking? Is that a, a conflict?
I mean, I, I would love to use the Evanston Plaza parking. That would be ideal. I'm still in contact with the, the management for Evanston Plaza and hopefully we could come to an agreement on parking of some sort or something.
So Mr. Ali, I don't see anything in the lease to suggest that, that the premises include the parking in the rear of the building. There, so you might want to confirm with your landlord what the conditions are for the parking in the rear of the building.
Okay, I'll, I'll even have him write a letter if you guys need. Okay, I'll I'll even have him write a letter if you guys need.
That would be good, that would be advisable to do for your meeting with council because um yeah, there is nothing here to suggest that you that that is part of the common areas. As a matter of fact, it designates common areas as being simply the hallway. Um so yeah, you you wanna know that your clients have use of that parking also.
Okay.
Does the board have any more questions for Mister Ali? No, okay, I'm gonna close the record. All right, our discussion.
I have only one concern, uh I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Carol.
Uh my concern is parking. As I told uh everyone, I was a frequent client of JetBlue. And frankly, I always parked on the opposite party parking at the plaza. Because coming to this place from both directions, you cannot access. If there are no empty spaces on the street, south of the space, you're simply stuck. You you don't have a parking space. Uh the thing is that and from the response by Mister Ali, I believe he relies mainly on pedestrian traffic and that's understandable and probably he will have enough clientele from pedestrian traffic, but I would emphasize on the fact that people are stopping in front of this place. Uh there is a bicycle path and there are actually uh that there are there are risks of incidents over there, accidents over there. Uh generally, high risk of that. There are some plastic bollards that are between the um bicycle path and uh the the street. There is a kind of a narrow about two feet marked area. But the fact is that people using, for instance, JetBlue services used to park either on the bicycle path or in between the bollards. So I would strongly suggest that these bollards are multiplied at least by two so that nobody can park on the bicycle path uh over there, so that there is certain uh safety measures. The other thing is that even and I can uh confess this, even uh me parking on the other side of the street, I cross the street at this location, not at the uh lights that are about, let's say, hundred yards to the north. So if people continue to do that, there is another risk of pedestrian traffic across the street. And uh Dodge is relatively high-volume street. So with all these concerns, and if the building model of Mister Ali is okay, I'm okay with the proposal, I will support it, but I will suggest both to him and to the city to make some additional measures for the safety of pedestrians and bicycles at this location.
I don't know, can we make that a condition? That we have the city traffic examine this, because this is a very high-volume Dodge and Dempster uh um intersection. Maybe we could put that on our conditions.
I think I think you can, it's certainly something that would, he couldn't do unilaterally, but he can work with public works to find some kind of solution to increase.
Or at least at least there should be something like a sign or with a fine or whatever the city uh thinks it's.
That's what I was going to suggest, Carol, and maybe um you know, I I never want to saddle a new business owner with any additional expense, but it seems to me that um that requesting that um that Mister Ali work with the city to get unquestionable signage in front of the store, that there can be no parking in that location, because I don't think that you know, I'm I'm familiar with it too, I I don't think that it's obviously, everyone knows that they're not allowed to park on a bike route lane. But um that's not to say that is not ignored on occasion. So you know, maybe having uh an additional fine or something would discourage that further.
Could we tack on to that in the same vein, um a condition that deliveries be received from the rear?
You know, I'm not sure that I'm not sure that we can do that, because it's not clear to me that the that I I don't think that the car wash, which is the only rear entrance is part of the premises that Mister Ali is leasing. And so that, so you know, you could say, you know, we could say, okay, if the landlord wants, although Mister Ali's already signed this lease. That would be something actually to put on the landlord rather than on Mister Ali, and that probably should have been done before the lease was signed, but.
But then maybe to address that point, to clarify that deliveries can't, that delivery how do I say this? Trucks making deliveries cannot stop directly in front of the shop in the bike.
Right, that delivery vehicles, a condition of our our recommendation for approval is that delivery vehicles must park in the rear of the property to make deliveries. I think that that's reasonable.
And I think that's Jill was i- isn't that what you were expressing, Jill, because I think we'd have to, we don't want these trucks parking and tying up traffic and causing backups and problems with the bike the bike lanes on Dodge. I think that's something that we'd want to condition before this be- before this comes before city council.
Yeah.
Right next to this property is an alley in between the uh the insurance place, the currency and this store. And mostly, when I pass there, there's always a truck in the alley. So that's where most deliveries have been being made, whether they want to talk about that or not.
Oh, to the north of it.
The north of it is an alley right next to the building.
Yes.
So I don't know if the trucks are delivery trucks, but there's usually a big truck parked right there, and there's an opening that goes into the building.
So I have a question for staff, Cade, um I know there's an issue that if more than fifty percent of the revenue um of the store is with tobacco products, that it's actually classified as a smoke shop versus a convenience store, if I understand that correctly. How is that actually monitored by the city? Um I you know, I I am noting that this is in close proximity to the high school and it is going to be selling tobacco. We've sort of talked about how the sales of that tobacco is going to be monitored, but um overall, when you consider whether this is a convenience store or a smoke shop, how is that monitored?
I'm not sure how they would come to a specific um percentage of of um of sales, I think is what it is, but but certainly on an annual basis, the health department would would perform some kind of inspection, but um I guess it would have to just be if it's a concern or not, I suppose, versus the actual percentage of sales, which I think would be hard to determine.
Yeah, my only concern is its proximity to the high schools that relates to that.
Well, it's against the law to sell tobacco products to people under the age of eighteen. And I have seen stores closed down and had all of their tobacco products removed um in convenience stores close to my own home, so I think that Mister Ali just, you know, has to be cognizant of the fact that there um you know, there are always eyes on businesses that sell a lot of tobacco product. It would be unwise to plout the laws.
I think as the recommending body here, I think based on what I'm hearing, I think that we can make a positive recommendation to city council with some further conditions, so that they have more complete information in the case can can continue to counsel um, you know, with some further conditions, in my opinion.
That's a great idea, when you make your motion, please put those recommendations in. Okay, Mister Ali, do you have anything else to say before I read the standards? Hello? If you're saying something, you're on mute, so go ahead.
So via letter, the record is closed, I'm not sure that at this point, protocol-wise, that those closing statements should have already been made, no? Can we, are you, do we need to reopen the record if he needs to make closing remarks?
Well, if he has remarks, I will reopen the record. No remarks, okay, so I will go on to read the special use standards. Although the staff recommends approval, the responses to the standards below constitute the professional opinion of the planning and zoning staff. Determination whether the standards for special use have been met shall be exclusively afforded to members of the board. For the Z B A to recommend that the city council grant a special use, the Z B A must find that the proposed special use A is one of the listed special uses for the zoning district in which the property lies, this standard has been met. Convenience store is a listed eligible special use within the C one commercial district. B complies with the purposes and policies of the comprehensive general plan and zoning ordinance. The staff believes that this standard has been met. The use is compliant with the zoning ordinance and comprehensive general plan. The proposed use promotes the growth and development of a business and commercial area and strengthens Evanston's economic base. Standard C does not cause a negative cumulative effect in combination with existing special uses or is a category of land use. The staff believes that this standard has been met. The proposed use has limited potential to negatively interfere with any proximate residential or commercial uses. Standard D does not interfere with or diminish the value of the neighborhood. The staff believes that this standard has been met. The proposed use would occupy a currently vacant storefront and is non-objectual to surrounding commercial uses. Staff has not received any public comment opposing the proposed use. Standard E is adequately served by public facilities and services. Staff believes that this standard has been met. The building is served by adequate sidewalks, streets, trash collection, on-street parking, and is in close proximity to C T A bus service. Standard F does not cause undue traffic congestion. Staff believes that this standard has been met. The location is well-suited for customers to access by foot or bike, and the staff believes that there is adequate turnover of on-street parking spaces south of the subject property to accommodate customers who wish to drive. Standard G preserves standard significant historical and architectural resources, that standard is non-applicable. Standard H preserves significant natural and environmental resources, that standard is also non-applicable. Standard I complies with all other applicable regulations, staff believes that this standard has been met. The project complies with all other applicable regulations to move forward with the next steps in the special use process. Can I get one of my board members to call the motion, please, with conditions? Anyone who remembers the conditions?
I wrote them down and can start, Muffy, unless you wanted to?
No, please, Lisa.
All right, I'll give it a shot, um and then chime in uh if I'm missing anything. Um forgive me, I'm pulling up the case number here.
You could you could also add um conditions on on hours and then also hours for deliveries if if you wish.
Yeah, hours I had, thanks for the note on the delivery hours, Cade. So in the matter of Z B A two zero Z M J V dash zero zero five seven uh at the address of twelve thirty-five Dodge Avenue, I move that we make a positive recommendation to city council with the following uh conditions. One um one, that all deliveries be uh all trucks that are there for deliveries be required to park in the rear. Um two, that hours of the store be maintained uh from the time, I believe, of uh ni- nine A M to nine P M is what I heard. Uh three, um do we have to put a a condition in there about the the percent of sa- uh revenue around tobacco? Or that's just a matter of the special use here, so that would not be a condition?
I don't think that that's a condition, I don't think it's um it it's it's staying within the bounds of the law, so it's it's really not a conditional, I don't believe.
And not in our purview as zoning.
So to Kate's point about hours for the deliveries, um do we have best practices to what that would look like, Kate, or uh or my fellow members?
Well, I I would simply suggest that, you know, hours of delivery might be uh in non-rush hour hours, so if he's open from nine A M until nine P M, that deliveries take place between, you you know, ten thirty and two P M. So before the kids are out of school, um after the rush hour has largely passed, that seems reasonable to me. But but once again, I don't, you know, again.
I agree, yeah.
I I think that those those would be ideal hours, but I you know, whether whether your vendors will respect that is another story.
Yes, however you could suggest.
Make that recommendation.
Jill, were you saying something?
Could I raise a question on the, so I I understand that Mister Ali said his intended store hours were nine to nine. His lease indicates that he's limited to seven to nine P M, seven A M to nine P M. I would just think over time, with its proximity to the high school, a nine o'clock opening would would quickly become um it would be more advantageous to have an earlier opening or to have that option to have an earlier opening to get the high school kids on their way to school. So do we want to, are we comfortable putting instead that the conditions are seven A M to nine P M, which would be in accord with his lease?
I agree with that, Jill, because I think that the car wash is open from seven A M to nine P M, and this is an adjunct facility, if you will, so people waiting while their cars are being washed should have access and Mister Ali should be able to tap into that um that customer base.
So we're gonna revise the um condition to be seven to nine, um Lisa?
That sounds that sounds appropriate. Do we need to, based on Carol's input on the site plan, is there a condition here about the site plan when this goes to city council?
One thing that.
Go ahead.
One other condition that I thought we had considered was that Mister Ali would collaborate with the city of Evanston to uh create definitive signage prohibiting parking uh in the front of his um store, which crosses the bike lanes.
Well, and and Carol, you had mentioned the bollards issue, I'm wondering if the the condition might be working with city of Evanston staff to determine what measures are needed, whether it be signage or additional bollards to to address sort of the safety and parking concerns there.
I I would I would suggest that in our decision, we make a kind of a more general recommendation that uh there should be uh some safety measures guaranteeing the safety of bicycles, pedestrians, and no parking in front of the store, something like that.
Okay, so we've had a lot of discussion during this motion being crafted. So Lisa, could I get you to repeat some of this, so we can be kind of clear on what we're voting for?
Kate, did you capture that for um for the minutes? The other, the the last piece is that, you know, that the, you know, that this be developed in accordance with, you know, the testimony and documents as presented here. Uh does Melissa or Kate have a record of that as we spoke through it?
We we do, we can we can put together the actions and and kind of clean this all up, I don't know that we need to.
I I feel pretty clear on the motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Call the roll, Kate, Kate.
Chair Cullen?
Aye.
Members Orden?
Aye.
Member McCauley?
Aye.
Member Deacon?
Aye.
Member Miranchov?
Aye.
Okay, but I have to say this, by unanimous decision, Mohammed Ali, you have won your your.
You you go before, you go before council.
Right, we send you before council, thank you so much for your proposal. Okay, he's muted, I'm sure he's saying thank you, we are going to move on to thirty thirty-eight Isabella Streets. Are the respondents available?
I am.
I am.
Mr. Skidmore, okay?
Hello, everyone, good evening.
Just a minute. Okay, Kate, can I get you to read this into the record?
Thomas Skidmore, appellant and neighboring property owner, seeks to overturn the determination of the zoning administrator permitting construction of an accessory structure less than 200 square feet in the R1 single-family residential district. Specifically, the appellant repudiates the determination of compliance regarding the maximum permitted building lot coverage, zoning code section 6827, and maximum permitted impervious surface ratio, zoning code section 68210. The zoning board of appeals is the determining body for this case. And then I did, I do have one new response from a neighbor at 2720 Lawndale, Carol Wooton. She's in favor of the zoning administrator's decision.
Okay. Mr. Skidmore, can we get you to talk about your appeal?
Certainly, and good evening, and thanks for everything that you guys do. I have to admit, I'm not a zoning expert and learning a lot here in the last few months, so bear with me a little bit. But, you know, really, the foundation, I guess, of the concerns is really around water drainage and property value degradation, and it relates to what I believe is non-compliance with zoning ordinance as it relates, again, to the building lot coverage and impervious service lot coverage. You know, I've also retracted a lot of information from the Freedom of Information Act, and also have just looked at, in doing that, really trying to understand what has been a lot of the historical activity of 3038 Isabella, and what kind of zoning has been applied for, and what has actually been done at that facility, or home, I should say. And then, so during the permitting process as well, and working with Kate and Melissa, I received basically, you know, what is a one-page summary that talks about the level of compliance, and I can show that if you'd like. It didn't have a lot of detail around what I'd say is the background as it relates to impervious surface lot coverage, which I think is where the major variance is, in my opinion. The building lot coverage, honestly, is fairly close, you know, from the data. So, and where the discrepancies really lie, there's three major areas, I would say, from my opinion. And the first one is, there's a series of things that have been done at the, that 3038, again, really around applying for permits and either doing something different than the permit was designed for, or not applying for permits, like an outdoor porch, covered porch, for instance. And there's no data to make a foundation of what size that porch is and how much surface area it's covering. And even on the most recent sort of application for a permit, which didn't exist until I complained, by the way, there is a plat drawing that shows it as a 10 by 12, the engineering drawing shows it as a 10 by 8. And so then that raises questions, even the engineering drawings aren't complete. So it raises a lot of questions, is even that structure meeting compliance or designed to 10 by 8, maybe it's a 10 by 14, no telling. So all of that rolls into a lot of questions around, you know, the impervious surface coverage. And I can actually walk through, if you'd like, and show some, some drawings and pictures around...
You can, but let me just say, this is the zoning ward of appeals, and we can't really talk to your permitting issues? Those are not our, that's not our purview?
Okay.
We can talk about the other stuff, but we can't really talk about the permitting. We have a permit department, and they would have to discuss that with you.
Okay.
The other thing, Mr. Skidmore, that if I may add to that, I think there, there have, I know that you've done an incredible amount of research, and, you know, I applaud you for being so thorough in, in doing that. I don't know that we're here to discuss previous permits that should or should not have been pulled. We're here to determine one issue, and that is whether or not the zoning administrator for the construction of this shed or urban studio is in compliance otherwise. And so just given that, that it narrows the scope a little bit of what we're focused on, I, I think that it would help us to zero in on that.
Right, those are the things that we can talk about.
So the specific issue, then, is the amount of surface area covered at his, his lot, correct? Is that, I just want to make sure I'm getting...
We can talk to that, yeah.
Okay. And so then I would have to ask Kate, how did he determine, where's, where's the fact base to determine how you, or Melissa, or you, I should say, Kate, determined that you have the appropriate amount of impervious surface lot coverage? Because I was never provided anything in the Freedom of Information Act, nor was I provided any calculation from you after multiple emails.
However, I think in the case of this, the zoning administrator would be Melissa, right, Kate?
Correct.
Okay.
It's usually typical for, because it was her determination for her to not, to somewhat recuse herself from the conversation. But to speak to his, his point about impervious surface, really, the bulk of where that comes from is from a 2016 zoning analysis which was performed, which we often use as a baseline for properties if they have a plata survey that's out of date, or if the plata survey doesn't accurately depict the existing condition of the property. We do have significant reason to believe that that analysis is accurate as a baseline, at least for building lot coverage and impervious surface coverage, with the exceptions of the new shed, and the exception of some additional impervious in the, in the front yard, whereas ribbon driveway was infilled. And those numbers can be accurately estimated with the plata survey, as well as our GIS software, and that's included in the, in the packet.
Kate, may I ask you a question?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Skidmore is suggesting that, that the size of the shed is, is, could potentially be 10 by 14. It could be quite a bit larger than what has been presented in the documents that, that the zoning administrator received. Is it not in the city's power to actually go and measure the structure?
Yeah, my understanding is that an inspector was sent out, and that the measurements match the measurements that were provided to us from the homeowner.
I saw that you had requested an inspection. That's why I was asking, can they actually go out and, and measure the, the structure to see that it complies with what was represented to the zoning administrator? And you're saying that, yes, it does?
Yes, yeah, we have no reason to believe that it's larger than, than 10 by 12, and then it has a small deck portion on the front.
And am I correct in, in reading the documents to understand that the deck portion, because it's elevated, does not, does not constitute impervious surface? Is that correct?
The deck doesn't count towards impervious surface because its size is less than 3% of the lot size. That, that's something that, it's an exclusion that all property owners receive.
Okay.
I thought that when I read the packet, that I heard that the entire shed was built on piers, and so that really changes the impervious surface question. Is that correct?
Well, the shed itself is, is built on piers, but regardless, it still counts 100% towards impervious surface.
It does, okay.
I mean, so, so as a practicality, it's probably, it's better than if it was flush with the ground, but as far as our calculations, it's counted at 100%.
Okay.
So, so my whole goal of this discussion was honestly just to get a, a measurement, Kate. I, that's the first I've heard that somebody, somebody said they were going to go out, and I don't believe they, they made it out. And I'd like to understand who that inspector was and see that report, if that's possible. I don't know, I'm just a citizen, but my understanding is that physical observation did not occur. There was supposed to be a meeting, and it never occurred. Can you confirm right now that it occurred?
I'm, so I don't...
I traded, I traded emails with, I can't remember the building...
With Gary.
...his name right now.
With Gary. I can, I can confirm with him. The last that I knew is that they were able to confirm that it was what he said it was. I don't, I don't deal with the inspectors personally, so I'm not certain who the inspector was that went out, or when that occurred. They usually don't present any kind of written report.
Just to jump in for a second, to confirm along with Kate, an inspector did go out to the property, did walk around the property, measured some things, and, and did confirm those, those measurements for us.
Just to, I'm sure, confirm the measurements of the shed, or confirm the measurements of the deck that wasn't taken account of, or both?
Of the shed. The deck received the deck credit, so regardless, that one wouldn't matter, but did confirm the size of the shed.
So, sir, if this has been done, are, is that your only objection?
I, I just fundamentally, I don't know, I'm an engineer by background, just so you know, and I'm civil engineer and mechanical engineer. I can look at a plot survey pretty quickly and, and size up, you know, how much surface coverage is being taken up. And Kate, I don't know about the, the, you know, satellite views and things like that, but it clearly, you know, the driveways, it's an entire basketball court, I can show you the whole thing of what was permitted. It's an 18 by 14 permitted patio that I think you're running off of, and that patio is in the back, and there's a little bit on the side yard, and there's an entire piece of this that's taken up in the front yard. And all of that is in question to me, whether that is impervious surface. I'm, I'm, you know, again, it's just not me that's complaining, there's other people, I see Rosalie and Paul on here, but, so the concern is, is the amount of impervious surface really being represented the right way? And then, you know, I didn't know, again, I, you know, I haven't got a lot of communication from the team here on, hey, listen, we did measure it, and, you know, this is, this is the numbers we're getting. And so that's led to a lot of me trying to just figure out, how do I, as a neighbor, try to understand what is going on in the permitting process, and what's the data that you have? Not a lot has been provided to me, again, either by, you know, the Freedom of Information Act, or from the zoning group around, you know, what level of detail they have. All I've done is tried to ask what the data, do you have to support this? And this is the first time I'm hearing that, A, there was an inspector went out, B, the level of detail there, that's there. So it's kind of disappointing, as being a 25-year Evanston person that pays a lot of taxes, so I don't know, I'm just going to leave it like that.
To, if I can speak really quickly to Tom's point, those numbers are estimated. He's, he's right when saying, you know, typically, we would look at a plata survey that accurately depicted the existing condition. We didn't have that. For accessory structures that are non-habitable and under 200 square feet, there's no building permit that's required, so the review is not as stringent, or it hasn't been really as, we don't nitpick everything. So it is often that someone might come in for a shed, and they don't have an accurate plata survey. And so we will estimate lot coverage, impervious surface ratio, and that is what we did here. But we do have a better baseline than typical because of that 2016 analysis. So I'm not saying that it's not possible, Tom, that it's, it's slightly over, it could be slightly under.
But I would argue that he's way, way over the mark right now, without even putting in the shed. Hey, this is what it is. I can, I can show you something that would be, I think, pretty interesting to folks, if, if it's all right, but I can show you, I can show you the survey from 2016, and I'll show you what was done, if that's all right.
I have a question, if I may interrupt. Is there any damage to the adjacent properties from standing quarter, or any, any other consequences after the shed was built, or even before that? Is there any slope that leads the rainwater to the adjacent properties from this property?
I would say there's definitely concerns with the rain runoff, and I don't know, Rosalie and Paul, if you want to comment on that, but definitely, there's concerns about that enough, as far as like going in with damage and so on, but, you know, the patio's been in place since, I think, 2016, and certainly had some flooding. Hey, Rosalie?
Hi, we're both here. We're at, hello. We're at 2751 Lawndale. So we are next-door neighbors with the Skidmoors, and then the yard in question is on Isabella, and it backs up to the back part of our yard, if you can kind of picture that.
Is there an alley?
The alley is way, way behind where bo, both of our yards ends up. We have no access to the alley.
Okay.
So, we have, over time, had a lot of, in the past few years, and I don't think we're alone in this, as Evanstonians, our, the back of our lot is, in the past few spring times, with all the rain we've had, it is, it is a pond or a lake.
A large, a large area is.
It, it's, and that is a concern to us. The issue for us, though, is that the way our lot is, we are kind of, we're sort of boxed in on all sides. So, and we seen the back of our yard, not the front of the yard, or not the house, but the back of our yard is kind of a low point between, it's like, three lots, it's, yeah, it's at least, yes, three lots, not really counting the Skidmoors so much, because their, their, their lot is, doesn't go back that far. So, so we do have concerns about water. But, well, I, I think we can, I, I, I will say, I, when this was, I had not, we had not intended to talk tonight. Well, I think we can say we talked to them. We, we spoke, we, Paul spoke to...
Ma'am, what is your objection?
I don't, I don't really...
You're surrounded by three.
I don't really, I don't really, I don't really, I don't know that we have an objection at this point. It's, it's...
Our, our work is a low point.
We're, we're kind of the low point in the neighborhood, in, in this part of the neighborhood.
So your property is low. So you're offering an observation that water is an issue in the neighborhood, as it has been, you're right, throughout Evanston. We have had with these, you know, once in a, once in a 10-year rainfalls, many of us have experienced flooded backyards, and that you have not been exempt from that by any means. And so I understand that although you're not objecting to this, that you, you see it as a viable concern.
It's, it's...
I, I'd almost like to say it's kind of a city concern, I think, because there's just, there's lots of, I think everywhere, there's lots, lots and lots of people that have added to their properties, and over time, there's less place for the water to go.
And this is, this is Paul Greenberger. So our lot does not go from Lawndale back to the alley, and it, as other properties do, like, so we receive water likely from the property, direct, the property behind us, east of us, which actually has a different address on Isabella, and then potentially water from the issue stake. We'll find out more in the spring. So, and as I say, we get a big lake back there in our yard, because we're the low point. So it is, to answer the member's question, yes, it's an issue.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the, the observation, and thank you for coming out to add your voice.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, board members? Um, I, I have a question.
Now that we've had an inspector go out. Go ahead.
Um, Mr. Skidmore. Yeah, I, the, the question that I have and I, because I, I um, have been detecting in, uh, the data that you presented to us is that this, I understand that lot coverage is certainly the underlying issue um, on which the approval of the zoning administrator may hinge. Um, but it seems to me as though of big concern to you was actually the use of this um, structure more even, well, you know, equally so to the lot coverage that it is how this um, structure is going to be used. Is that accurate?
I would say that's completely accurate. I mean, um, you know, it's, it's, I know there's a series of things, I guess, you know, I personally feel like, um, you know, the owner of thirty thirty-eight Isabella has been, you know, that there wasn't a permit for the, you know, well, I want to get into all that, but anyway, so that there's some concerns on how permitting has been handled in the past, let's say that. And then the second piece of it is there's a new structure going up. I actually asked, um, Chris, I asked you about what that was and you basically said it's, I'm building a big structure or something. You gave me a real vague answer. It has two doors, one for egress, I assume. It has three windows. Um, it's a summer wind product. It is a urban studio. It's classified. And it's marketed as very much a home office and everything else like that. So I think it's going to be an inhabited structure. Although all the permitting and references and all communications suggest it's a shed. So that, that is, that is a concern for me because it's like, okay, and now we have an inhabited structure and it's a small lot and, and you know, so is this can be lit up at all night and everything else like that? What else is going to go on in that, that particular? I don't, I don't know what, I guess we just call it an accessory structure that covers everything. Although I don't even see urban studio as a permitted thing under excessive structure. So all the engineering drawings are laid out that way too. Um, they all say every bottom right of the engineering drawing says it's a urban studio. So I, I think it's, I think it'd be helpful to know exactly what it is and why you're permitting it. Um, I, I would find it really hard to believe if somebody would drop seven K on a, on a, um, a, um, shed. I would never do that. I don't know. It's just, so I think there's, yeah, and then I know it's not your, your purview to look at that. So that'll be the next, um, issue that I need to deal with, with the next building, I guess, authority. As to, you know, what was the appropriate use and for this particular. But I guess it's just a trail of, there's been a history of, hey, I'm going to permit an eighteen by fourteen patio and I'm going to turn it into an entire basketball court in the front yard. And then I'm gonna not even tell you, I'm building a backyard uh, outdoor porch. And then, oh, by the way, I'm putting this thing in, in the backyard and it's actually a, um, it's gonna be an urban studio, but I said was a shed. So that, so to me, like, um, I, part of this is a little bit of making a point, taking a stand and, and getting something in public record to say, okay, this is what you said it was and and, and it's pretty frustrating being a neighbor, not knowing or seeing people just doing things and not, I would say complying with the law or um, taking advantage of others potentially flooding or whatever the case may be. So there's a reason there's zoning ordinances and there's reading reason you all are here and serving our community and it's, to me, it's, there's just an underlying issue.
Well, staff, I don't know if you want to speak to what he had to say, but I think our decision here tonight, board is to talk about, um, the things that we can talk about, the zoning, the impervious surface cover, the light, the lot covered. I think that's all we can talk about. We can't even talk about the permitting and we really aren't inspection department.
It, it, that, that is true. I, I understand. And we've had this problem before, Mr. Skidmore. Which is defining, you know, what constitutes a patio next to somebody's house as opposed to, you know, a, a rot garden where they happen to have a chair. What constitutes a shed as opposed to a habitable structure? Uh, you know, again, if there's no plumbing, um, I, I, many sheds do have electricity. Um, many people do work in sheds, you know, albeit generally speaking, you would consider it to be lawn care type of work or some, some type of thing like that. But I don't know that, that we can create a definition for this as long as its size falls into the definition of what a shed is. So again, that might be, uh, that, that might be one of those areas where the zoning laws need to be updated to accommodate uh, how structures are used, but I'm not sure that.
I agree with, um, Mary when she says that, but in our zoning ordinance, we have no definition for shed. We just have, uh, we just deal with accessory structures. So that's where we are. I don't know that we can create a definition for this meeting tonight.
Right, right.
Yeah. So our only hope is to either uphold or, uh, cast down the decision of the zoning administrator. That's what we are here to talk about tonight.
If I may, can I ask just one question? Again, you know, the, what I was hoping to get out of this was to have a more thorough review of the plot done. Because I, I, Kate, I, I've seen the twenty sixteen plot and, and there's a lot of A's and B's and circles around and, and, but there's no data behind it that's been provided, uh, to be fair. So I haven't, I guess what I would like to request is that thorough data that is out there somewhere that I have not been given. Or to request a more thorough review of the impervious surface lot coverage. That, that's all I'm asking for.
So that, that would be a decision that the board could make, members of the board could make a condition that this homeowner get a new platter survey. That's not something that we typically would require for a, a structure of this size because the cost of a, of a survey can be between one and two thousand dollars.
It, it, these days, that'll be two thousand dollars because they're, they're slammed. So that, that's, yeah, I, I'm not sure that I'm not sure that I feel comfortable imposing that on the homeowner.
It's not fair to the homeowner.
But, well, I, you know, if, 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 if there has been misleading or in fact false information provided to the zoning department, which affected the decisions that the zoning department made, then you know, I, 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 yeah, I'm, 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 I'm feeling uh, the issue here. I don't, you know, I can't dismiss Mr. Skidmore's concerns. He's right on top of it. He's a mechanical and, you know, electrical, electrical engineer. Um, with a pretty good sense of, of what's before his very eyes. But I do think that that is a, a rather onerous ask. I, what, other board members?
Could we not, um, if an inspector went out to, uh, to review the measurements and compare that to the twenty sixteen, um, survey that you had, did that inspector not, um, validate both the measurements of the shed and other measurements as compared to the twenty sixteen survey?
No, the inspector only, my understanding is only reviewed the shed that was recently constructed. No other improvements ever done. Um, I mean, that's something we don't typically do is retroactively go after property owners, um, for doing something, you know, ten years ago, five years ago.
Well, didn't I hear that they had already made a decision about that, that porch? Ten years ago, five years ago?
The, the porch that he's talking about, the screen porch, I believe is included in the two thousand sixteen zoning analysis and that, that's because the number for building lot coverage matched my number for building lot coverage. Um, which is also why I believe that that was a good baseline for the impervious surface ratio with, with the exception being, um, those improvements in the front.
Well, I, um, I'm sympathetic to the concerns as it relates to impervious surfaces and certainly issues of standing water. I'm also hesitant to be an arbiter of, uh, issues. I, I'm also curious, I guess, uh, Mr. Skidmore, what conversations you've had with your neighbor and where those conversations have gone? That brings you to, um, you know, feeling that you needed to bring this to, you know, a, a third bot, you know, an independent body to review. Have there been conversations with the neighbor? Um, through these discussions?
Not a lot. I mean, the first conversation I had, you know, usually when I do some work around my house, it's pretty substantial. I communicated and like fence work or whatever. Um, sorry, my computer's about to give me two seconds. Sorry.
Take your time.
I want to keep the record open, but I do want to ask the board some questions about how we move forward.
So, no, so, um, and then we had a conversation, um, I guess in June, I travel a bit too, just so you guys are aware of it, not this year as much, but um, so in June, I think, not June, um, it's like late July, I guess. When everything started happening and it started going up, that's when I, I saw, I think, Chris out in the backyard and I looked over the fence and said, hey, what are you, what's going on? What are you building? And I got a pretty insincere answer. So at that point, it's kind of like, okay, well, I guess he's, they did have a really small shed at one point. And so you know, I just kind of let it kind of go. And then when it started turning into this much larger, I'll just call it an office building sort of looking thing. That's when I started, what are my options? Um, started just looking at all the things that, uh, I could possibly go through to try to figure out. Is this legal? And hey, if it's legal, it's legal. But my concern was more related to that. So we did not have a lot of conversations. But I, I felt sort of helpless, um, honestly too, because, uh, it was like already, you know, constructed at that point. So what are you gonna, what are you gonna talk about really?
So Chair Colin, if, if all, you know, if the, if Mr. Skidmore, should we offer Mr. Skidmore the opportunity to make any closer remarks so that we can close the record and begin deliberation?
I thought those were his closing remarks. Do you have more to say, Mr. Skidmore?
No, it's fine. I mean, you know, I don't think, um, you know, again, all, all I'm asking for is some of the data underlying is really the intent of this is to understand the basis for the argument. I, I don't, I, I just, I, even if there's a twenty sixteen survey, Kate, I have not seen the underlying detail other than one number popping off. And I, I would, I would question, I would love to be able to, as a citizen of Evanston, have some information to say, how are you making this determination on impervious?
So my question to staff is going to be, if we, uh, vote on this tonight, does it close the book on this or can he get this information that he wants? Is it possible for him to even get this?
Well, there, there are, there are always other avenues. If, uh, Mr. Skidmore chose to, you know, um, pursue litigation, uh, he, he's, obviously any citizen can do that. Um, I would suggest that that's kind of the problem that we have here is that the, um, the burden of proof and the detail, the actual physical details that are being requested are sometimes outside of the city's, um, you know, outside of the city's full capacity to provide. So they could go on a twenty sixteen survey that presumably was accurate and then add in what they know has been added in and then extrapolate from there. But they cannot, you, you know, speaking to you, Lisa, they can't go do another survey. That's, that's outside of the scope of the, their, um, you know, professional capacities. And so, you know, that's the only thing that would really tell the tale. And so, um, I think that, you know, what really is before us is that we, we accept that the twenty sixteen survey was essentially correct and that the city inspector did go out and inspect the new structure and that the zoning administrator did use that to reach a decision. And that, um, you know, that a big part of the problem we're having here is because of how this structure may be used. And, um, and once again, un- unless there is, uh, you know, conduct in that structure that raises red flags at the city. Um, I don't know that, that they, they have the authority to do anything about that.
However, I think that tonight I'm going to close the record now, Mr. Skidmore, and we're going to talk amongst ourselves as a board. Because tonight, what we're here to determine is are we upholding the decision of the zoning administrator? That's the question. That's what we are here to talk about.
But I think if I understood Mr. Skidmore correct, he had not seen the two hundred, two thousand and sixteen survey or the calculations attached to that.
Right. Which are in the packet, right? Those are in the packet.
Yeah. So that's not, he was provided with the same information that, that I had, which is the platter survey, which I think predates two thousand sixteen and then the zoning analysis from two thousand sixteen. And we use those analyses as, as baselines, um, basically with the understanding that the staff member at the time that put it together was, was professional and competent and that it's accurate.
Yes. So, so I, yes, I did receive.
We actually have closed our record and so we can't have more public comment. This is the board's chance and opportunity to talk amongst ourselves. So we can come to a decision. Thank you.
Sorry.
That's good. Board members.
Yeah, Colin, are there other public opinions on this case? Besides the emails that we received, are there some people that are currently on the phone or with us that want to?
I think the only other people on this call are, are the Greenburgers, right, Kate?
Um, the, the property owner of thirty thirty-eight Isabella's is on the call, but on, only if you have specific questions for him.
But then we did get an email. You sent an email around in support, correct?
Correct, from the property owner. Yes.
So we've received one letter of support. Any additional communication from neighbors besides, uh, the test?
I just received one additional letter, um, right before the meeting, which just says that they're, they're supportive.
So two letters of support.
Correct.
Okay. Anything, anything else from the board members?
Um, are, are we in discussion now?
We're in our discussion, yes.
Yeah. So I think, I think this is a really, I think that this is a, a, a difficult, um, a difficult case because a lot is presuming that the twenty sixteen administrator who was going off of an old survey, um, was able to, uh, provide the current staff with, um, very accurate information. And, um, and I think that typically the zoning department has been conscientious. And, um, but I, you know, I do, I, I feel for, for Mr. Skidmore in that when you, when somebody says they're going to be putting up a small shed, you're thinking of something that they'll be putting their rakes and shovels in and not something that, um, you know, that looks like a small guest, a very small guest house. Um, but I, I would also say that even though it may be a really attractive shed, that, um, that if that shed creates a nuisance to the neighbors, including you, Mr. Skidmore, then you, um, you, you can take that to the next level. Um, so, so for your neighbor to keep that shed as a low profile structure on his property would probably be in, um, would probably be in, um, in his better interest.
Muffy, I'm can, I'm, um,
You can call me Muffy.
Yes, sorry.
Everybody else does.
I'm trying to figure out what I call you in the, in the case of the, um, I'm curious from your perspective. So you've gone beyond lot coverage and now you're talking about use. To me, why is, why do, are we concerned whether somebody is using this as their yoga studio, storing their rakes or sitting there writing a proposal? Um, beyond lot coverage and impervious surface, I am not concerned about how they're using it. In fact, you know, I actually support the use of having these, you know, as long as they you know, are within the bounds of, you know, zoning and impervious surface. I think people should be allowed and encouraged to use their lots in, in, in innovative ways and in ways that it's, are reflecting the needs of families today during these times of COVID. Who doesn't need another space? I understand that it's not in our purview to talk about that, but I am not in support of, of, you know, sort of restrictions around how we're defining this, this use and really think that I am only comfortable in looking specifically at the impervious surface here.
Well, yeah. So, so the reason I say that is because, you know, again, it goes back to the, the case that I referenced earlier that we all heard on whether or not the rock garden with chairs in it was a patio or whether it was a rock garden with chairs. It was a matter of definition and the, it, it, it's about impact. It's about impact on the neighbor. And, and so, you know, if somebody is going into a shed, now and then to pull out rigs or whatever, that's one thing. If, if that becomes an activated space where you know, the teens can sleep when they're at home and it's got electric and then there's music in it and, you know, then it becomes another habitable structure and the impact on the neighbors is, um, is, uh, greater. So I do think that that is a valid concern for zoning to consider. Um, but once again, this falls into some definitions of use. And right now, we don't have any definitions of use for sheds. And this does fall into the legal definition of a shed. And, um, and from the best that we can determine from all of the data that's been presented, it also falls under the acceptable, uh, lot coverage for impervious surfaces. So I just don't, um, you know, we're, again, we're operating on the same data that you have, Mr. Skidmore. Um, but that's, that's what I would say right now.
Okay. Well, we can't really talk to Mr. Skidmore, so I don't know. Uh, Jill, do you have any comment about this decision uphold or, or not uphold the zoning administrator's decision?
I mean, I can, I can empathize with Mr. Skidmore because I, I think he has legitimate concerns as a neighbor. Um, and I think that he is raising them in a reasonable way. I can also, um, share that even in, in my position professionally, in my provision, position on this board, um, what you see does not always, it, sometimes the numbers can surprise you. Sometimes I can look at a lot and think that the hot coverage is not matching with the numbers. And then, you know, you do a quick calculation and you see that what you're visualizing, um, is actually not perfectly correlated with the facts of the numbers. So I can understand, um, being confused or challenging or suspicious of the numbers. Um, I take Kate's point, though, that, you know, we, we, we make these decisions with the best information that we have. Um, I trust that Kate, um, used his best judgment, that everyone in the city used their best analysis and the tools that we have and the historical data. And, um, you know, in some instances, it's quite close. Um, but I, I'm comfortable staying with the decision.
Harold, do you have a comment?
Uh, I will be very short. Uh, in the absence of new plat of survey, uh, we as zoning members, I believe we have to trust our staff with the calculations. I'm just wondering during this period of time, even before July and now, uh, an update of the previous plat of survey probably was possible for a reasonable price if this company is still in business. But once again, in the absence of such thing, I rely on the dat- data provided by the zoning staff. So I'll support the zoning administrator.
I also support the zoning administrator with this. Now I am going to ask that one of us put together a motion to approve or otherwise the zoning administrator's decision. That's our motion for tonight.
Do we, we don't have any standards to read here?
No, this is not a decision that, this was a, uh, right, to re- appeal the decision of the zoning administrator. So we didn't have a really like a property standard thing that goes through.
Right. So I, I would, um, make a motion in the case of, uh, thirty thirty eight Isabella Street. Uh, twenty ZMJV zero zero seven zero that we, um, find that the zoning administrator did not err in, um, finding that the proposal was compliant with zoning regulations.
And we uphold their decision?
Yes.
Yes. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Jill. Okay, Kate, call the room.
Chair Cullen.
In favor.
Members Orden.
Favor.
Member McCauley.
Yes.
Member Deacon.
Aye.
Member Miranchov.
Aye.
Okay, we uphold the decision of the zoning administrator. Thank you, everybody, for attending this meeting this evening. Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Skidmore.
Yeah, thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Skidmore.
All right, bye bye.
Bye.
All right, this was a lot of fun with the unanimous decision of Muhammad Ali. I enjoyed that. So with some, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn for our next meeting will be in December on what day, Kate?
Uh, the fifteenth.
Fifteenth of December.
One case and then, um, elections as well. We're gonna elect chair and vice chair.
Oh, okay.
Wait, where's, where is Chair Cullen going?
Chair Cullen has not said she was going anywhere and I just heard about this. Right.
All right, well, can, can I already make a motion that we reelect Chair Cullen?
Well, I mean, we can do that next time when they bring it up, but right now, the motion is, can we adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, everybody stay really safe and at home.
Yes, everyone stay really safe.
Really, really safe.
Thanksgiving.